Welcome to the Finance and Facilities Meeting for Wednesday, February 26. It's approximately 6:30 and we're going to get started. We have a compressed schedule this evening because we have a whole in an hour, right?
Yes.
So, our first order of business is approval of minutes from our previous meeting on January 22nd. I would accept a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo. Thank you, Kim. With that motion on the floor, does anybody have any comments or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of acceptance of the meeting minutes? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, to none. Six to zero. Thank you. All right, our next item on our agenda is our Buildings and Grounds Report. Does anybody have any questions or any issues they want to bring up on the B&amp;G report? I'll just remind everybody somewhere later in our schedule, later in the year, we will have, in the June meeting, we will have actual representation here from Buildings and Grounds, as opposed to just reading the report. They come in the beginning of the year, they come at the end of the year, and in the meetings in between, we review their report and then we can ask them questions. If you have questions that you want to pose outside of this meeting, you can email them to Jean, and she's our liaison with the B&amp;G team. So, does anybody have any questions? All right, I have one. It's a very much, given our current events, has to do with, Mr. Mike Parker brought us wipes, and so my question is around disinfecting the schools and the schedule for that, and whether we have enough staff to be doing that proactively, like in essence, what is our plan to try to keep the incidences of spread of germs as low as possible? We got an MASC bulletin today, right? And so maybe this question is for half for you, Jean, from a B&amp;G point of view, to relate to B&amp;G, or maybe Dr. Charocek, it's for you, relative to a district-wide plan, because I think everybody's a little more than up in arms, given the current events.
Yep. So, the one thing I can say is that we do have a service that comes in and does disinfect the offices in the classrooms. I believe it's on a monthly basis, and that we've been doing for quite a while, I think like last year, or maybe two years ago. So, we do have that service that's coming in. If we do see higher absenteeism, we can always contract them for more frequently, but right now, they do come in and spray concentrating a lot in the nurses and the admin area, where the students are coming when they're ill. But that's what we have right now. I can get some more information from Tim, what that service is, but I know that we did bring that in. I think it was almost two years ago now, and so we've been doing that.
And that one specifically focuses the admin areas, especially at the elementary, around the nurses' areas and all of those places. So, they put a specific focus there. I also actually ironically just have an update about, we were very fortunate, we just had our February break, and so over February break, a huge focus was put on cleaning and disinfecting. In the middle and high school in particular, there was a focus on the nurses' area guidance, administration, kitchen locker rooms, bathrooms, and the media center, they were cleaned, they were sprayed. All of the classroom floors were washed using a disinfectant solution. Desks and chairs were also disinfected, touch points such as door handles and faucets were disinfected as well. And then, so that was the main focus of the cleaning over the February break, and they did that at the middle school, the high school, and at each of the elementary schools. So, you know, we're getting, the same as you got from MASC, we're getting lots of communication from the Massachusetts Association of Schools superintendents, from the Department of Ed. There's been a lot of, I watched the news last night, and my mother called me right afterwards and said, "What are you going to do?" So, you know, I think this is a situation that we are prepared for, we have ongoing communications, we're working closely. Dr. Flaherty and June Casas and I met once already this week. I think Dodd is planning on coming forward at the SISL meeting with a report on what the health plan for some of the things that are going on are. And, you know, we're working really hard. I've been watching our attendance closely, both for the flu and, you know, because I don't really think the coronavirus is here right now, so that, but watching that right now, we've been watching closely. And actually, we had a little uptick before vacation, but this week, we have, our attendance rates are really good, and we're working really hard at watching that. So, I have checked, they are not providing any specific guidance about a different kind of disinfectant being needed. So, standard disinfectant procedures are considered to be the right ones to use in, you know, for the flu outbreak, as well as for whatever may come of the current situation that's going on. So, we're on top of it, the custodians are doing a great job. We've talked a little bit about how do we get extra wipes in classrooms and, you know, a few more precautions. I don't know if you remember, but when it was the H1N1, we had that, you know, that same sort of situation with raised anxieties around some of that. So, I don't, we don't know what's going to happen, but we are working to make sure that we have procedures in place, so.
I have one tangentially related question, and maybe we can push it to when we review the Munis report, which is, like, do we, how's our maintenance staff versus subs? So, there was a question brought to me about, you know, can we continue to do this type of cleaning? Do we have enough subs on staff? Or is it like our classrooms that were kind of hurting for subs, fulfilling empty sub-spots? And although we raised the teacher rate, we didn't raise our maintenance sub-rate, so...
So, I haven't had anyone come to me and say they're having difficulty with that. I haven't specifically posed that question, but that hasn't been brought forward as a concern at this point in time. But, you know, I do know that they do have a very specific cleaning procedure that they have in place, and, you know, like, they target areas to make sure they're not, that any area isn't overlooked in a particular period of time, so they're on a schedule, as sort of that goes. But I can certainly check some more on that, but...
That'd be awesome. Thanks. All right, anybody else have any questions, as I monopolize this into the table? Okay, so our next item is the School Funding Sources Review.
Okay. So, what we'll do is bring forth some clarification for the new members and just reiterate where our funding sources come from. So, the first thing I wanted to show is the FY '20 School Appropriation Budget is $61,017,942. That's made up by $9,257,567 from Chapter 70 funds. The remaining amount, $51,76375, is the city contribution. So, when we're looking at the expenditure report, this month, I only have the appropriated budget, because as I'm sitting here right now, I'm going, "Oh, I forgot to do the other one." So, that is when I talk about the appropriated budget, and that's the funds that come through the city. The next area that I wanted to show, highlight, is the school revolving accounts that actually have budget offsets. So, I have here, we have $3,857,702 that are revolving funds that have some sort of offset to our existing budget. So, Circuit Breaker is $2,3956, and that goes towards tuition, special education tuitions. School Choice is $621,072, and we currently air-mark that towards salaries at the high school. And then preschool, kindergarten, athletics, those go towards salaries, as well as music. Transportation, $218,600, goes towards driver salaries, and building rental of $420,000 is an offset to custodial salaries and utilities. And the final one that we're bringing up is the non-resident tuition, which is also known as service funds, and that goes towards the high school, teach 6, and I think student, part of the student activities. The other funding source that we have is the federal and state grants that we have. So, we have $2,385,645 in FY '20 grants, and I have them all listed here. Most of them are DESE grants, the last one is from the DPH, which is the Comprehensive School Health Services Grant for $5,000. So, that's kind of the three main areas that we have. So, what we have is $61,017,942 for the appropriated, then revolving, and then grant. That would bake up what we say is our school funding. And then on this chart, it's going to show you what it makes up. So, the city contribution is 77% of our school funding, and Chapter 70 is 14%. The grants make up 3%, and the revolving account makes up 6%. So, we do have other revolving accounts, but they don't have an offset right to a specific item in the budget. So, when we're starting to build the budget for next year, these items that I listed before are listed in the little revolvings, gifts to schools, school lunch, et cetera, et cetera. So, I just wanted to give a little overview, so sometimes when I'm talking about something, I thought there was a little confusion at the meeting or two ago, where the revolving is part of the appropriated, and I just wanted to show how it is really broken out, the appropriated there. We do have revolving funds that we need just to run the school district. And if any time, anybody has any specific questions, by all means.
So, I just wanted to add, if I'm going to go back to this sheet right here, which is the federal and state grant funding, some of these are entitlement grants, and some of these are competitive grants, which means that the entitlement grants are issued basically due to a demographic that we have in the city, but the money is targeted specifically to those areas. So, for example, Title III is for ELL, and so the only way that money can be used is for, to improve or enhance ELL services. Title I is for economically disadvantaged, the only way that money can be used is to improve or enhance services for students in that area. However, in Beverly, we have four schools that are school-wide Title I, so that sort of loosens up the requirements of what we can do, but we still have reporting requirements around how we use the money and what it can be used for, and we go through an approval procedure to get that money. So, I think that's just, I just wanted to kind of clarify that, it's not money that just comes in that we can use for anything.
Restricted.
The Perkins Grant is for the high school, for the Career Invoked Tech services, so DECA comes out of Perkins, some curriculum development for DECA, that sort of thing. And the Targeted Assistance Grant is specific to the middle school, based on the accountability for a subgroup that was underperforming. So, the money needs to be used to enhance the performance of an underperforming subgroup that was identified. So, these are, while they're, you know, grants that we can count on coming, they fluctuate, sometimes they're higher, sometimes they're lower. In my time, just here in Beverly, I've watched the Title I entitlement funding source drop down to 600, rise back up to 675, so it's, there's some, I'm not really sure, there's something to do with the census and something to do with something else, or how much it's funded, but that money can fluctuate, and we don't really know what that number is every year to year. It doesn't really go more than 10% one way or the other, but just, I just wanted to kind of clarify, that's what that money is. So, it's not just general pool of money that we can use for anything, it's usually pretty targeted to what we can use it for. And likewise with the revolvings, we have to, like, we can't use the kindergarten revolving money for anything but kindergarten. We can't use the athletic money for anything but athletics. So, some of these sources, they do have some constrictions around how we use them, but they do get added to the total amount that we spend to maintain the programming that we have in Beverly. So, just to kind of clarify on the grant piece.
Sue, just remind me what the IDEA, Part B...
That's just special education.
That's the 1.4 million, that's the big one?
Yeah. IDEA, so the Part B is your general special education funding, and your, Part B is the early childhood, so that's preschool, the preschool program, that goes specifically to the preschool program.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else have any questions on the school funding sources? Yes?
Just have a question. What's non-resident tuition compared to school choice? What's the difference? What's on the other page?
So, the non-resident is the service program, and those students are able to come to the high school for one year only. So, school choice, when they enroll in, we keep them and they keep staying. The, it's international students.
Oh, okay.
I forgot to mention that.
Thank you.
Key little word. Yeah. And so, we've noticed that that has been declining from a few years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this item, before we move to the next item on the agenda? All right, so the next item on the agenda is our new positions.
So, you have two items here for this. We have the request for financial analyst, that what I've put here is that the administration is requesting the position of financial analyst to assist the Director of Finance and Operations with planning and organizing of the business and operational programs of the school district in a way that provide the best possible education services with the financial resources available. This is something that was on the priorities, when we were doing our priorities for school committee of the whole, and it was one of the items that we, gotten a lot of checkmarks. So, therefore, when we, Dr. Charocek and I was looking at, remember the 23831 that we received in, and we used 173,770 for the kindergarten reducing, eliminating the kindergarten fee next year, we had a balance remaining in there, and since this was the next item that was looked for for priority, we're looking to put that in place this year and use the funding that was remaining, and then therefore it would carry over into next year also. And so, the reason why we're saying it's going to be $15,000 is we're anticipating we won't be able to get anybody in until April, and then the health insurance from April to June, and then this position will be in the budget for next year, because we'll be using the money that we have this year that gets carried over. It's not new money coming in in FY '21.
All right, so I would accept a motion to accept this position?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay and Kim. And now I will open the floor for questions or discussion.
The second piece that you have here is the job description. Since this is a new position for Beverly, we've developed a job description, so.
Okay. All right, so go ahead, Mr. Manzo.
So, what do you anticipate the annual salary to be for this position?
We're anticipating that it would be between $58,000 and $60,000. So, when we first were bringing this forward, we were thinking of an assistant business manager and/or a budget and grants analyst, and doing research with other communities and what they were paying for that person, and what, I did an analysis for Director Charocek on the business office, and what are we actually looking for? And so, what we came upon is that, you know, a financial analyst, not just budget and grants, we want them to be able to look at everything, and take some of the mundane things that tie me up the whole day. So, signing all of the purchase orders, signing absentee slips, signing all of the invoices on the warrants, so that would be something that somebody else can be looking at, so I can dig in deep and see, you know, where can we have some savings, potential savings, and look for some cost savings in the budget.
Do you have any follow-ups there, Mr. Manzo?
No, I just want to say I wholeheartedly support the addition of this individual. We used to have one years ago, long before Jean was here. We had an assistant business manager, and it was nice having the backup. It was also, it was a good feeling that the ones we had, the ones that I knew when we were here, they all went off to become business managers somewhere else. And so, there was a sense of, you're giving back to the greater school community by training people to do this job, and so the hope was that, you know, someday, years from now, when Jean's gone, there'll be someone able to step in, and it'll be someone from one of these kind of positions. And so, it was Beverly doing their good deed for the rest of the school communities around us.
And one of the things that I was adding to this is that I will be able to do is some, develop some business department procedures, so that we can have in cross-training. So, that's one of the issues that we have, is that when we do see clerical person or bookkeeper vacate, it's, we scramble, because we don't have somebody that, you know, that knows, can back that person up. So, this person would be cross-trained and be able to help in that area.
Any other questions? All right, Jean, I have a quick question for you. First thing, Mr. Manzo, I love having you around for your institutional knowledge and the fact that you remember pre-Jean. I don't know that a lot of the rest of us do. So, of the 15 this year, you know, by the time you get somebody in, 15 plus 5 for healthcare, we have that out of the extra 300, and then you said next year it'll be recurring money, meaning that, like, out of the 173, right?
So, we had 230 minus the 173, so we had about 158, I mean, about $58,000.
So, can I address that? One of the things that we talked about is that we're going to, we're going to come back to you, so we're only taking out 20, there's 57 left.
Right.
And we will be using one-time expenses for the remaining money this year, so that then that money, now we have a balance of $57,000, that would be eventually transferred in to cover this position. So, we now know that if we go forward with this, and if we approve this transfer right now, the remaining money that's sitting in that AED contingency, or whatever it was called, which was the money that came forward late, would be utilized only for one-time expenses from now till the end of the year on this budget, and then in FY '21, that would roll in to fund this position.
Right, so that's what I'm trying to ask about, that of the 300 that came in late, we said 173 was going to K revolving to do our kindergarten reduction elimination celebration. And so, it'll in essence be part of, part of that 300 next year will fund the totality of this position.
Yes.
And so, we're taking the leftover of that out of this year's money, but next year, we'll take the totality of it out of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, yes?
Is there a financial analyst in the city ops sort of section?
You mean looking specifically at school budgets?
Looking at sort of the same type of role, but for the city.
Bryant is the director, and then he has a treasurer and auditor, but he doesn't, there isn't a financial analyst.
Has a finance advisor.
Yeah.
But that's not, they're not, that's not someone that's analyzing the school budget. So, this is really, what I think, first of all, Jean underplayed her, what did you call it, review of the department? I mean, what she basically did was take a whole look. One of our whole themes this year, as this new money becomes available to us, even the new money we got last year and this year, is it's a really good opportunity for us to look for efficiencies and for restructuring, right? And so, if it gives us an opportunity to restructure, so Jean sat down and took all of the positions that were in the business office, and started to say, "Well, he's doing this, and she's doing that, and this position's doing this, what makes the most sense?" And so, now we've created opportunities with this, this position allows us to really become more efficient with all of the positions that we're using, and then begin to look at some of that cross-training opportunity, so that, you know, if the payroll person goes out and she's the only one that knows how to do payroll, we're all not going to get paid, right? We don't want that to happen. So, making sure that there's some cross-training on different roles in, within the business department, and then taking a look at, and really, you know, I kind of pushed Jean really hard to say, "What are the things you're doing that someone else in your department can do, so you can get to the big meat work, and so that you can start, you know, looking at that protocol manual, or taking a look at the whole payroll system, and are we doing it the most efficient way?" Because that's what we have you for. And then we can have some of the other work being done by people who we train in a way that they're able to do it. So, she, you know, that was, she did a really good job at that, and I feel really good moving forward that we are a little more clearly defined about what we can and can't do, and how we can be more efficient in what we do, so.
And the other thing I did want to add also is that separation of duties, so that's one thing that the auditors are always looking at us to, is that you have to have separation of duties, but yet we have such a lean group. So, that is one thing, is that we want somebody that can be cross-trained, but it's very difficult to cross-train somebody internally already, because now they're able to enter the vendors and pay the bills. So, I just finished my MCPo course, which is for procurement for Massachusetts, I have to have a license for that. I just finished it last weekend, last week on vacation, and that's one of the things that they kept saying, is that separation of duties, and I'm like, "Yes, but then we need to add to that, so what can you do?" So, that's why I'm looking for this person to be the person to cross-train, and then be able to train somebody. And it doesn't mean that we can't have somebody else come in and, in a pinch, and do it, but there is that, you have to be careful that somebody can, you know, do it all.
Do you anticipate this position to be part of one of the bargaining units, or not?
No. Yeah, yeah, no, we, this position would be an individual contracted person.
I may have missed something with the numbers, which might possibly be true, but you said that the difference would be $57,000 left, but you're looking for $58,000 to $60,000 to pay this person potentially for the position. Where would the difference come from?
So, the difference would, we'd have to find, you know, some, there's always savings when we go from one fiscal year to another with retirement, so, I mean, we may be able to get somebody in at the lower end, and that's really only $1,000 we're looking for, but if it's at the higher end, we're really looking for $2,000, and $2,000 out of a $61 million budget. There's room to, wiggle room to do something. One of the things I just did this year is we had renegotiated our copiers, so there's a savings there. We're not really going to see that until the end of this fiscal year, because they just got delivered now. So, that's an area that we'll be looking at when we're building our budget. But whenever we have a teacher that retires, there's always what we call, you know, a savings there. What do you call it? Attrition.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't have a, I'm not worried about us not being able to fund it to the fullest.
All right, any other questions? All right, so there's a motion on the table. All those in favor of supporting this new position? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jean, what do you got next?
So, the next thing I have is the FY '20 Budget Review. And so, the first thing we will look at is the revenues. So, you'll have the revenue report, and so this month, we did increase the appropriation, because as you know, it was brought forth in December, January timeframe to the City Council. in December, January timeframe to the city council, and that's that 320,831 that we received. And so that makes our budget 61,017,942. That's the first line of this. And then everything else is kind of like very similar to last month. One thing that we are doing is, you know, aggressively, you know, trying to collect fees and tuitions that are past due. I sent out a connected message last night to the kindergarten parents that are beyond three months past due, and we've been getting a great response from people on that. Transportation revolving, you know, there are still some people on payment plans. The remaining of that 26,000, about 20,000 is going to be coming in from the charters that they bring in money for, not just the tuition fees. I think that's about it. I mean, I do, I'll point out, as Karen was asking about the non-resident tuition, so we do have budgeted in, in our budget 105,000, and we knew from the beginning that we were only going to get 67,000 because we hear about them this year, we hear about them in the spring for next year. So that, therefore, we knew right away that we were going to need to use 37,475 from the previous year's budget. As well as you can see in that, I'm looking at the second column, the building rental, we're only estimating to take in about 200,000 for rental, which majority of it comes from the YMCA program, after-school program. And we were down to just one church, but churches was the other big thing that we got funds in for. And we knew that we were going to be using 220,000 as a carryover. That's the one area that I'm watching for when we're building FY '21's budget because I do not think that we'll have that amount. So we're talking about decreasing the amount that's being offset. So it would be utilities that we would be looking at. If anybody has any questions on a specific item.
Mr. Manzo, is your hand up?
Nope.
Our table is not curved, so Lindsay's blocking you.
Sorry.
All right, does anybody have any questions on this report before we go to the next one? All right, so we'll go to expenses.
Okay, the, and I apologize, last month I was so really, so excited that I brought the other ones, and then when I asked Paul to run me the report, I forgot that I included the grants and the revolving. So I'm going to do is when I go in the office tomorrow, I'll run that, and I'll send it out in the same email thread that we've been getting them, and I apologize on that. So this is the, so this is what we would consider the appropriated budget that I talked about earlier. Just to add a little to discussion on this, so if you look on page 37 of the report, or 38, either one, where it says total expenditures, our original appropriation was 60,697,111. And then the second column is going to be transfers and adjustments. And what that is, is any purchase orders that were left on June 30th that weren't paid out get carried over and, which was say about 300,000, and the 320,831 that we did receive is part of that, which then our revised budget with carryover is 61,376. And so far, we've spent 31,965, and we have encumbered 3 million. So if there's any specific questions anybody has, I can discuss those. I'm always watching these. I'm going to be coming forth with a couple of transfers down the line. So what I did this week is, which I do probably quarterly, maybe more often, I check the staffing patent to the budget lines. And if we see somebody that maybe I missed a step or somebody moved a column, I have to come forward with some transfers. So I'll discuss the transfers later on. But when you're looking at this report at the end, it will tell you the percentage that's used. So if we're looking at a teacher line, I just flipped to page 12, and I can see, you know, the adjustment counselor, library media is at 50%. That's about where we should be right now because the teachers are paid 26 equal checks. They do get five of them at the end of the year, but at this point of time, we should be about 50%. So I'll look at different lines and see if we're off. If we're off, I noticed in the high school, a lot of the lines were on page 18. I see a lot of them are at 50.1, 50.3, 51.4. I'm like, what the heck happened here? And what happened was there were some stipends that were to be charged to the student advisors line, got charged to the people's direct line. So now I have to go into each person and move the funds to a different account, so to get it back in line. But that's how I find those things, that something, you know, got charged to the wrong line. Sometimes you'll see people that are only at 49%. That person is taking some time off, you know, without pay, or it could be something of that nature. I mean, pretty much it's, you know. And so my transfer I'll have later on is going to correct some, a lot of those that I noticed that was off, and some of them were off as little as $30. And some of them, I just totally missed a paraprofessional.
So for those people who balance their checkbook to the penny, they'll understand a $30 transfer.
Exactly, yes.
Those who don't, perhaps won't. All right, does anybody have any questions for Jean on the expenses report? Okay, we'll move right along because that brings us right to the transfers.
Yes. So I have the first transfer I have in my pile. I mixed them up here. The first one I have is the kindergarten salaries. So this one here is taking the money out of the A D 700,61013 contingency account. And that was the account that was originally the 320,000. And then we took 95 of it that went to an outreach counselor. And then you, as the whole committee voted to eliminate the kindergarten fees, to do that, we were going to push this money towards the salaries to offset what's in the revolving to remain there for next year when we need it. So I'm looking for this to be approved. It's 173,770.
Who wants to make that motion? Thank you, Mr. Manzo.
Second.
Second? We'll put Karen in the books as the second on that. All right, are there any questions on this? This is a, just the next step in a fantastic day for our school system. So hearing no questions, there's a motion on the table. All those in favor? Fantastic. Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
I'm going to bring over the one that says that you just voted on the position, so I was being very proactive that if the position came, then I can do a transfer immediately. And so this is on that same account. So it's, you know, after taking that out, we had $57,000, 57,061 remaining, and I'm looking to transfer 20,000, 15,000 of it will go towards the salary line, and I'm putting it in with the business office salaries, and 5,000 will go towards health insurance with the assumption that this person would be taking health insurance.
Okay, I have a motion for that, please. So moved.
Second.
Lindsay, was that you?
I didn't say.
Oh, sorry. Karen and Kim, thank you. Any questions on that? All right, hearing none, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of this particular transfer, $20,000 out of the admin contingency into a spot where we can pay for the remainder of the year for a new business.
Financial analyst.
Financial analyst? Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
So the remainder on that, A D 700 will be 37,061. So when you get your report next month, you will see that on that line.
And we'll come forward with a plan for you on that money.
Oh, fantastic. That's always exciting to know. Excellent, excellent, excellent.
And the next transfer I have, which I sent out today, is the result of looking at the expenditure report and comparing it to the staffing patent. And we did have our reserve for negotiations account number OT 118, 61189. And I just said that it's going to various salary and benefits accounts. So looking at the staffing patent to the, what's budgeted, any of them that I was off, that's why there's such a change in them. Halfway down, you'll see MK 095, paraprofessional, and that's, I missed that FTE when I was doing the budget plan. And then the benefits that were going to be offset with this where is the health insurance line for 19,555 and FICA for 25,000. So FICA is very hard to anticipate what the cost is going to be because anybody that gets paid. Needed a little, a boost in there, and it's not something that you can just say, okay, it's going to be 1.45% of what, and that's what it is.
Okay, so I would accept a motion to accept this batch of transfers.
Will be to zero, which is where we should be. It will be drained.
It will be drained after the scotch of transfers.
Yeah, for 96,392. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay.
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Now that we have the motion. All right, so there's a motion on the table. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
Thank you. The last item I have is looking at the gifts to schools for the month of January, and we have a Hannah PTO donation of $500 to the Hannah Gifts to Schools.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept that? Thank you, Lindsay. Fantastic, Kim. Questions? I have a question.
Yes.
So it would appear as if the Hannah PTO is making a donation to the Gifts to Schools, which typically we use Gifts to Schools to accept, for instance, maybe the yellow school bus money, and then we allocate that money back out to a specific, usually a PTO for some kind of thing. So it seems quote-unquote backwards to me that the PTO is making a gift to schools.
Yeah.
As opposed to a business making a gift to schools.
Right, yep. So a lot of times that if the principal is looking for something that they're going to be paying for, part of it out of the appropriation and needs a little, so that we're writing one check to the vendor.
Okay.
Also, sometimes when we have to purchase things, that we want to make sure that we run it through our books for purposes of 1099s, et cetera, et cetera. So anytime a check comes into the Gifts to Schools, it comes to you to vote. So it can be something like that. The yellow school bus, as you know, that comes in, that goes into the, we have a revolving that's for the Mass Cultural Council grants, and that comes in there. But then that way, if we were going to be paying, you know, a $1,000 bill, we could hit two different accounts versus the PTO writing a portion and, and it, you know, as you know, you look at all the warrants. If I be right, in half of it, you know, you'd be questioning that. That way, it's in there.
Well, so a big shout out, thank you, Hannah PTO. All right, so there's a motion on the table. All those in favor of accepting this $500 donation? Any opposed? That passes six to zero. And as I love to say, who would ever say no to free money?
True, true.
All right. I don't see anything else on our agenda. Do you have anything else? Does anybody?
No, I do not. And I was going to just jump out onto my documents to see what we're bringing up next month.
Fantastic.
I just have to get to my FNF schedule. And so for the month of March, would be the next month, correct? Good job, Jean. Technology. So Dr. Shirocheck will be working with Judy Miller and Steve Palomo on what we would, you know, bring, be discussing at that. If there's, anybody has any questions specifically that you're looking for, I'd ask if you could send them to myself, Dr. Shirocheck, and Steve Palomo.
Start, why don't they start with sending?
Just you and I?
We'll figure it out.
Yep, you can send them to me, and then we will find out, you know, see what we can get. If we can get the questions a good 10 days before the meeting, that helps so that we can make sure we get the data from them. But it's just a broad technology is what we put down in our agenda.
And that meeting is March 18th at 7:00 PM, for those of you who are keeping track in your handy-dandy notebooks. Okay.
Are we, are we talking about the change in that?
Yeah, I was just asking.
Hold, please. You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, fantastic.
All right, so anybody have any other questions before I ask for a motion to adjourn? I'm asking.
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Manzo.
I'm writing.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Who would ever oppose that vote? That passes six to zero. Thank you. You get a couple of minutes back in your schedule. School committee members, thank you, Kim and Bev Cam. School committee members, you have a couple of minutes to rest, relax, get a drink or whatever before our next meeting starts.